Good evening. It's Tuesday, September 10th, 2013. I'm opening up this meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 27th, 2013 regular meeting?
Salute.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any amendments to that? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have an opportunity now for public comment. Would any member of the public like to speak? Okay. Then we'll move on to reports and discussion. And our item tonight for discussion is Board of Education Goals for 2013-14. At our last meeting, we all agreed to have Joe take the draft that we had at that time and work on it to specify more the detail within it, which in this iteration you refer to as strategies. So do you want to kind of give us a little talk on your...
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I tried to, you know, condense some of the language, the bulleted list under each draft, I think, last time. I'm trying to remember what we... indicators, I think. And I actually went back to my own goals from last year. And the way I had constructed those was the goal and the indicators were more the products, like a report on such and such, or a copy of the cafeteria plan. Those would be indicators, you know? What could you prefer that would be evidence that you had done X or Y? And then underneath those indicators, again, on my own goals, that I had a series of strategies of activities that I would do to try to produce those indicators and thus have evidence of meeting the goal. So I didn't get into it to the point of actually coming up with indicators or products because these are board goals. You know, when we get down to how these translate to my evaluation, for example, then I think it's appropriate to have those things. I just really wasn't sure whether we needed that level of granularity for board-level goals, that we were more trying to set out a number of kind of visionary objectives for the district for this year. And so also, as I was going through the strategies and kind of massaging them, I noticed that some of the strategies, as they had been written in early draft form, were, you know, at the risk of using the word "micro-management," they were almost like, you know, calling out the specific things that individuals in the organization were going to do. And again, I'm thinking, well, if these are visionary goals, we shouldn't be saying, you know, "You'll do this, you'll do that." That's for us to, I think, call out in our own goals and say, "We're going to do this, that, and the other thing to meet." So I kind of collapsed some of those. I just eliminated some of them, thinking that they would already be kind of underneath some of the other broader strategies that were here. And that was my, kind of my goal, to do that. You know, you can be the judge of how successful or not I was able to be in doing that, but that was kind of where I was seeing taking what had been developed up to that point and kind of massaging it, condensing it a little bit, generalizing it a little bit. So that's...
Right. And you take these goals every year just to let everyone know about that? And then make your own specific around that?
Yes. Yeah, so I'll have four goals. One of them will be curriculum in the Common Core, one of them will be communication, one of them will be technology, and one of them will be food service. And the things that I will call out, that I'm going to do, will be much more specific and specific to my job description. And obviously, there are people who I supervise who are going to do things that are on an even more granular level. And I will pass these along to my administrators and say, "Okay, these are the board's goals. These are my goals. You ought to be doing something within your goal." Although, I give them the only way to say, you know, maybe there's something in their building that is important for them to do that isn't necessarily under one of these four. So I don't want to restrict them just to these, but I ask them to address at least some of these goals in their goal-setting for the year. That's kind of how the...
So if people have comments or questions, what your thoughts are on the goals? Lisa?
I think that these are good statements of what we want to see, you know, in a larger sense for the year. I'm satisfied with them. I guess where I would want to see, it's just what you said, Joe, what I want to see, the specificity, is when you come back to us with the proposed goals for you to meet for the year. And so at that point, you would be, I assume you would be bringing us more like a list of things that you expect to accomplish, and, you know, whether it's the entirety of a project or just a piece of a longer-term project. Is that reasonable?
Yeah. That's the way it's... We've done it in past years, yeah. Yeah, I'll take more general visionary goals and I'll tighten up the focus on them and indicate specifically what I and my team intend to do through the course of the year to actually produce something that addresses each of those goals in some way, shape, or form.
The one thing that I did want to ask about, though, and I think this is something that we may have talked about sort of in general terms, is the idea of reviewing the goals mid-year to get a sense of where we are.
We always do that. And so this would probably be a good time for us all to feel like, okay, if we're going to embrace these goals, if we are comfortable with where they are at and we officially adopt them in our next meeting, then I would also recommend having the goals as each of the committees starts to set your agenda for the year. Because so that midway through the year, we can say, "Okay, what have we done with Joe?" Or, you know, "What has Joe done with administrators to help us realize these goals?" I think mid-course evaluations, we've been a little weak at, frankly. So keeping them in mind would be good. Deirdre?
I'd agree. I think it's actually a pretty ambitious agenda that we would be setting for ourselves, so keeping these as a sort of a guide as we meet in the committees and referring back to them, I think regularly makes a lot of sense. So building in even a kind of a formal moment where we ask ourselves, "How far have we gotten towards our expectations of ourselves?" seems entirely appropriate.
You know, I would just, if I may, under communication, the fourth and fifth bullet points. One is articulate the dependence of student achievement on a coordinated effort between families and educators. And two is connect with parents about new standards and expectations. They seem awfully similar to me, so I just thought, in terms of how we're communicating on that one, that maybe we could rework that to just combine them.
Yeah. And, you know, when I sent these to you yesterday, I certainly brought to your attention that I didn't think they were... This was 100% ready for prime time, then in fact, maybe there were... Hopefully, there were only some tweaks that were needed. And that's, yeah, that's something we can look at. And I think still, depending on how you feel, still stay on track to be able to act on these when we meet in two weeks.
Yes.
Unless people around the table feel like we're so off the mark on these that we really have to kind of go back to the drawing board. And that's not my sense, and it's... Unless it's yours, so...
Yeah. No, I think they're, you know, on target. I think, you know, both of them could be combined because it seems like my sense is that one of the goals we want is continuing to really try to improve that link with families, you know, however that works with all, whether it's a teachers or the board-level link with families. But other than that, I think it reflects... Now, I do also notice that you're referring to a Director of Technology and Communication. So, you know, given that you made that alteration, is that the structure that you're working under right now?
That's the title that, actually, that's the title that was called out in the Selt report. It was actually, I think, technology, communications, and maybe data. But since Marvin already has the data function...
Right.
I don't see a reason to pull that out of his job description and put it in somebody else's. And I think there, I think we want that person to focus on both technology and communication. And those two things are linked because a lot of what we do communication-wise involves technology. And I think there's a natural linkage there. We're talking about websites and outreach to, you know, to the community, to families. Again, I think there's a natural connection.
Right, right. All right, great. Any other comments about this? And people ready, think that, you know, with this tweak under communication that we could vote to adopt?
Just, I... This question may be premature, but, you know, under the third goal, the strategy of developing an action plan for meeting the technology goals, would I be correct in thinking that that's something that you expect to happen once you have the Director of Technology and Communication on board, and that that person will be the...
Yeah.
The beginning of... Will be the person who'll be beginning to put that together?
Yeah. That second bullet will come out of the first bullet. And again, we're bringing somebody, we plan to bring somebody on board who has a level of expertise. It only makes sense that that person takes a leadership role in developing that action plan, because that person's going to have to take a leadership role in implementing the plan over the next X number of years. So, yeah, that's my thinking.
Mark?
I think the goals are pretty much ready to go. I, you know, tweak a couple of the strategies, that's fine with me, but I think the goals are fine.
Right. Okay. All right, great. Well, Joe, thanks for the work you've been doing. Everybody. And then it'll be on our agenda for next meeting. Thanks. All right, we move into the next section of our meeting under comments. Good news? Does anyone have any good news? Mark?
Just a comment on the Andy Bennett Tournament this weekend. It was a really great event and, you know, a lot of success by our teams. And, you know, look forward to having it again next year.
Yeah. It's actually a fantastic weekend with so many different sports being played and, you know, all the competition, and the kids who come out just to watch, and community members. It is a really nice event. I also wanted to just say that, just use this opportunity to call out Sheldon to say thank you. We did our facilities tour just prior to this meeting. And as usual, Sheldon and his staff do a great job as we start out the school year with all the buildings really looking great. They do a terrific job, so I want to thank Sheldon for that. And as well, I thought the staff opening was a very nice occasion, and I want to thank everybody who was able to show up that morning. Any other good news? Okay, then we'll move on to old business. I know I have old business, just want to confirm, thanks to each of you are doing an open house, or speaking at an open house. So in terms of starting out the year, meeting our goals around communication, that's really important. So thank you all for doing that.
Can we go through that list so I can let the building principals know for sure?
Right. Well, Deirdre and Laura are doing chancellor. Right, I don't know which is which.
K through 2.
Okay. And Laura's. And then Lisa's...
And Laura, you're doing 3 through 5?
I am.
You're middle school, right. And then Mark's high school.
Okay, great.
So you'll let the principals know?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you. Also, under old business, Lisa has agreed to be the representative from the board to the Board of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. So thank you, Lisa, for doing that. Any other old business anyone have? Nope?
I guess just one note that in the continuing work of the Ad-Hoc Committee on investigating the possibility of going paperless with our board meetings, that Laura and I got together and had a very fruitful discussion about, you know, how to pursue the investigation and what I think is necessary. And Laura very kindly agreed to be our tech consultant on this, so we're putting a list together of things to ask. And we have a couple of things planned. Well, I should say that Laura put together a very comprehensive outline of the steps that we're planning to take. And at the beginning of October, there is going to be a program at Ulster Posey's that we're both attending on the topic. And then we're both going to be at the convention at the end of October, and we expect to meet and talk to representatives of the companies that provide that service. And Mark is also going to be there, so I assume that we will ask for, let him know those people and...
Great, excellent. Good plan.
I also spoke, which you don't know, to Paul Slaton, who had done the initial work on getting this information together. And he had suggested, and I think especially since Meg is stepping down as clerk, he had suggested that we try to bring in the new clerk. And depending on who that person is, if they've got any sort of expertise with any of these programs or a different program, that we enlist that person's talents, if that's possible.
Very good.
Yeah. And we should have that person on board at our next... I mean, we should be able to appoint somebody at our next meeting. We're very confident.
I see Meg looking very...
Yeah. Train yourself, please. But that's my plan.
Very good. Well, thanks, you guys. Excellent. Actually, Joe, I'm wondering if you could just, because I know there's been some concern on the part of the board about the lateness of the scores from the state getting to parents. And I would anticipate that it's possible that board members might even hear from parents at some point as this stuff starts getting down to the level of students and their schedule, an update on those scores and when they've been gone out. And if you have any sense of the impact on our staffing at all?
Well, first things first, the score reports were delivered to us on Monday morning, yesterday morning, at around 11 o'clock. And I have reports from all three board members that they went out in today's mail...
Principals.
Principals, rather, I'm sorry. They went out in today's mail. So they're processed, and we took them in yesterday, sorted and distributed to the three buildings, because all three buildings have students now. You know, last year's 3 and 4, now 4 and 5 in the elementary. We have 6, 7, and 8 in the middle school. And then last year's 8th graders and 9th graders in the high school. So they've been mailed, so people should start getting them tomorrow. And people in the, you know, in the hinterlands will probably not get them till Thursday, but they're in the mail. And that was, again, at the risk of throwing anybody under the bus, that was an issue with the Regional Information Center, that they did not provide us with those until just now. They provide them in two different ways, provide them to you electronically, and then you can print your own. Or we've chosen, over the last several years, to have the RIC provide them to us. And in fact, when they put out the electronic, the digital versions of those scores just late last week, there were some errors in the reports. So I, for one, was glad that we didn't get them digitally and jump on the bandwagon and send them out, because we would have been sending out scores with individual student reports with incorrect data on them. So they realized that pretty quickly on the day they released them digitally and let us know, "Hold your horses." And so we did, and we got the reports Monday, and they're out. So in terms of the potential impact, we're going to have a conversation at our administrative meeting tomorrow. I believe that most of the, most if not all, three of the principals who had the individual scores, but in an aggregate form, not the individual score reports, already had a pretty good idea of where they had... They knew where the kids fell, so they built that into the scheduling that they did. The other thing that's in play is a proposal by the State Education Department that the Board of Regents is supposed to take up when they meet on September 16th to basically change the cut points to accommodate for all the things we've been talking about, you know, the fact that the tests were given before the Common Core was fully implemented. And, you know, to address this rationale, which you can, you know, you can take for what it's worth, that, you know, the idea was to get a baseline at this point that we could, that school districts could build on. So there is a plan to modify the cut points. We're going to be discussing that tomorrow to see how that may impact the original ideas for kids who need AIS. The hitch with that, though, I'll be quite honest with you, is regardless of what the State Education Department is telling us, we can use as a cut point in this first year. It raises the question, is it wise to use a modified cut point? Or should we start providing the additional help to kids, because we know they need it, regardless of whatever artificial cut point, SED, establishes? And, you know, I believe that the reason, one of the reasons for modifying or suggesting that the Regents modify the cut points is because that there are a lot of school districts that are going to have to hire more staff to provide those services if the cut points remain the same. We were somewhat proactive during our budgeting process. Those of you who were on the board then may recall that we put a 1.0 FTE placeholder in our budget to provide us with extra AIS help should we need to hire more, either part-time or full-time. So we, knowing that this was going to be, you know, a potential hot potato, we built ourselves a little bit of headroom in our budget to accommodate for that. So I don't know right now exactly what we're going to need, but I don't think we're going to be having to, you know, hire dozens of teachers. Other districts may find themselves in that position. I think we'll be okay.
So, but maybe if I could ask that, the principal reports will be on the agenda for the next meeting. If maybe they could give us some information on how they see that impacting in their buildings?
Yeah, absolutely. The Regents will have made their decision by then, and we'll know at least where the state is telling us we have, what the minimum cut point's going to be. And then I think we'll hear from the principals, whether they feel that we should go above and beyond that to make sure that we're preparing all of our kids to meet the benchmarks.
Laura?
Joe, do you have any sense of how, what the process is that the Regents go through? I mean, do they just pick an arbitrary number? Or is there some formula that they are employing?
I wouldn't even want to speculate on that, although I'm sure it's a little more scientific than picking arbitrary number. But they'll have, they'll have people from the State Education Department, I'm sure, provide them with a ration... You know, they'll look at the scores based on, you know, the old cut points, and they'll, I'm sure, have a rationale for why they think the cut point should be modified. And, you know, that is similar to what happens around this table. Regents will discuss it, and they'll vote on whether they want to, you know, go by that recommendation, or modify it, or reject it. I mean, my gut feeling is they'll probably, they'll probably just accept what's been recommended by the State Education Department. But that's not over till it's over, so... But if I were a betting man, I'd put some money down on the fact that what the State Education Department officials present is what they will probably accept is reasonable, and then they'll pass it along to us. Unfortunately, this isn't happening until the middle of September, but better late than never. And we've already kind of geared up to do more than we need to do. And I think our decision will be, do we want to do less than what we have to do?
Right. So, and on a related note, Deirdre and I were going to work on the letter to SED that we had agreed we would send to, in reflecting around the testing issues. But we thought we would wait to see, get that information more about the impact as far as AIS, so we'll wait on that.
Yeah, it won't be too much longer.
Deirdre?
I don't know if this is something that would come up later, but you did include for us, Joe, some information about being designated as a reward school. Could you explain that?
Yeah, I can't give you much more of an explanation than what I already put in my note to you, and it's...
This is a new practice?
Yeah, no, they've been... The State Education has been recognizing schools. A couple of years ago, we were, this thing just says, "Gap-closing, high-achieving, gap-closing school." That was the buzzword that year in terms of, you know, closing the gap between, you know, kids who are achieving at a, you know, at a significant level, for those kids who are, you know, maybe your ones and twos on a scale of four. So, you know, I'll just refer you to what I put. This one's coming from the state based on their meeting federal, you know, NCLB goals. And in this case, it was for a high school, based upon graduation rates, making annual yearly progress for both general populations, and the accountability groups, which, for those of you who aren't familiar with the process, you not only look at your aggregate achievement, but also disaggregated subgroups. Kids who are special education students are disaggregated subgroup.
Oh, so...
Free reduced lunch, you know, socioeconomic status is another disaggregated subgroup. So you don't only look at your aggregate achievement, but you also have to look at the achievement of each of the disaggregated subgroups that you happen to have in your population, and see how those kids are doing. So however, and you won't be surprised to learn that this calculation is made with an arcane formula that, you know, mere mortals don't pretend to understand. So however, they do that, and I mean, it's not a surprise because, you know, we have been traditionally a high-achieving school district, and this is just another recognition, in this case for a high school, that they're doing a good job. And as I mentioned at the superintendent's conference day, it's really the accumulation of 13 years of education that, not taking away from the high school, they do a great job. But by the time they get to the high school, traditionally, our kids are performing at a very high level. So this is recognition of that for this particular year. And next year, it'll be a different type of award, and maybe we'll get it, and maybe we won't, but we'll work on it.
So annual yearly progress was a concept added, no child left behind.
Yeah, that's right.
But now, we're sort of, now, New York State got the waiver, like all the schools that adopted, raised top money. So now, I think AYP is sort of not really the new thing, but it'll be another thing. Yeah. Makes sense.
Are there any concrete benefits that go along with designation?
No.
We got a certificate.
Yeah, it's suitable for framing. No, it's not a boy. I mean, they're not saying, "Yeah, we'll give you a 10% bump in your... I mean, they're not saying, yeah, we'll give you a 10% bump in your state aid or anything like that, and that's not the way these things work. It's a recognition, and, you know, I don't want to poke too much fun at that, because it's, it's nice to be recognized, and it's nice for the, for the kids and for the, the staff who are doing the.
Right.
The heavy lifting, to be recognized, but I mean, that and, you know, $3.50 will get you a cup of coffee at Starbucks, so, so we'll take the accolade, and.
It also.
Doesn't drive any money towards our district, for example, or, or exempt us from requirements or regulations, so.
Yeah, okay. Any question, more questions on AIS or testing or any of this? Okay, great, thank you. Any other old business?
No.
No, okay, we have another opportunity for public comment. Would any member of the public like to comment? Okay. If not, we'll move on to other.
Oh, I did.
Oh, no, you were, he was waving.
Oh, okay.
Hello.
I told you for being coy there.
Any topics for other? Anyone have any other?
I do.
Oh, right.
We had, if I can. We had a Communications Committee meeting, was it just yesterday?
Yes.
Wow, it seems like, and you did the minutes already, I'm very impressed. One of the things that is kind of a, of a near-term goal is whether the board wants to do breakfast with the board again this year, and I only mention it tonight not to, not to jump the gun on the, the Communication Committee's report, but if we're going to do that.
Yeah.
We need to start looking for dates and get something set up so it's still reasonably early in the school year, so if, if there's a general consensus, not that it's a requirement to be there, but it would not be a good thing to have this program and have the board members be able.
Right.
To attend, so we'll try to work, work a schedule that meets the schedules in the buildings as well as the sched, your, the availability of as many of you as possible, but we need to start planning if we're going to get that off the ground, and we, I would say we try to have it on the calendar within the next.
Great.
You know, do it within the next couple, three weeks, and we want to do it fairly soon. We did talk about another initiative that came up last year, as long as we're talking about communication goals and whatnot, and that would be to do something similar but different, and to have, to have a, perhaps a couple of opportunities during the school year where perhaps a small group of board members would have some kind of a program for parents and community members. Again, the same kind of thing, informal, that.
I see.
You know, not a presentation necessarily, or they could, had that, we haven't worked out the details, but an opportunity for board members to be available to members of the public outside of the, the understandable constraints and structures of a, of a formal Board of Education meeting, you know, to have a cup of coffee or whatever, do one during the day, one time, one in the evening, another time, so people can have access, just to open up those lines of communication in an informal way, and give people an opportunity. So we're going to talk about that a little bit more at our next meeting, but we wanted to just kind of float it out there and get you thinking about whether that's something you would support and be willing to, you know, spend 45 minutes or, you know, we're not talking about a three-hour.
Right.
Three-hour forum on a particular topic, we're talking about getting, you know, having access, letting people in the community have access to. Talking, we talked, I talked last year about doing one of them perhaps, like before the budget vote, so there would be an opportunity again for people before we finalize our budget to, who have an interest to come forward, and say, have you ever thought about this, or what about that?
Sounds good.
Joe, give it some thought.
That sounds good, yeah. That's a great idea.
Okay, and that's, that's all I have under other.
So you'll get back to us with possible dates for.
Yes.
Usually it's a Friday morning, it's typically what we do.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Get some dates, yeah.
Thanks very much, so.
Sure.
No other other?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to our action items. May I have a motion upon the recommendation, the Superintendent of Schools to create the civil service position of Personnel Assistant?
So.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any questions about that?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Who did all of these things before creating this position?
All of the people in the office have a little, a little piece of this, or that, or the other, and since we don't, you know, in a bigger district, you'd probably, you'd have a, an Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, for example, or a Personnel Director, you know, an Administrator, we don't have somebody whose job that is, so we, we kind of piecemeal it like we do, like we do, and a lot of small districts do, and you can't justify, you know, a deep administrative staff like you can in a larger school district. So we, we had, had some discussions with the current District Office staff, and kind of made some lists of, of all the things we do, and, and kind of added to that the fact that in, in the couple of audits that we've done, there are, you know, requirements to, for separation of duties within the business office, just, just to be sure that there's no, or that eliminates the, the chance that there'll be any impropriety, you know, the person who, you know, the person who processes the check isn't the person who signs the check, and that, that kind of thing, just as one example, and the other being that we know we're, you know, one of our goals, we're, we're kind of ahead of the board's goals a little bit, but that's okay. We know that we're going to need to do some, some heavy lifting in terms of the, the food service program, and that's going to involve more work in the District Office. It may involve Tom and/or Christine, our treasurer, taking a little different role with, with the food service program, so we felt that it was a good opportunity with these new requirements and expectations, that we do some reorganization in the District Office, and that personnel function was, was the one function that kind of jumped out at all of us, that a lot of people do, it's not really organized, it's kind of all over the place, it's an important function, and there is a civil service title that is, is on your agenda tonight that deals specifically with the clerical management of the personnel function, so that that would be a good way to kind of reorganize it around that, that idea, so. Kind of where it came from.
Thank you. Sounds good, very good. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Joan Burland, elementary teacher for the purpose of retirement as stated, effective December 31st, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Linda Mortensen, elementary teacher, for the purpose of retirement as stated, effective December 31st, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any comments or questions? Just say it's regrettable to have our veteran teachers, and, you know, we accept, obviously, their resignation for retirement as stated, but it is unfortunate that it's mid-year, but they've certainly contributed quite a bit to our school district, so. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve a request from Shannon Denise to extend her request for unpaid childcare leave from January 28th, 2013, through the end of the 2013-14 school year, concluding on June 30th, 2014, I think, right?
I'm sorry, yeah, of course. So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve a leave request from Megan Rodier to commence honor about December 8th, 2013, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing to the extent of her accrued sick leave.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve mentors for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the recommendation of Chrissy Orban to conduct dial screening for incoming kindergarten students as necessary to be completed no later than October 4th, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments, Lisa?
Just wanted to know what dial screening is.
It's a, it's a, it's a developmental battery of, a screening battery that gives the teachers information as to, to where the students are, and I think, especially in terms of like their linguistic abilities, so they, they can plan for programming with that child's needs.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment history of particular persons?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes, we're moving into executive session. Thank you.